It's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the order that the October 14th, 2025 Town Council Meeting, please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Brian, would you lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic and to the free will of this world.
If we can remain standing, I just want to give a moment of silence for Jacqueline Torres. Thank you very much. We'll move on to C, Presentations and Recognizations. We don't have any there. We don't have any public hearing, no new items, so we'll move to F, Public Comment. Anybody inside the council who'd like to come up, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hello, I'm Joanne White, 19 Wells Drive, Farmington, Connecticut. I've lived in Farmington for over 40 years and on Wells Drive for 28 of them. Wells Drive is a part of Wells Acres, which includes the following streets: Wells Drive, Fable Lane, Harvest Lane, and Laurel Lane. Part of the water, sewer, and storm drains in Wells Acres were replaced in 2018. The company that was contracted did not finish in August as was originally planned. A letter to residents from the town of Farmington dated September 18th, 2018 stated they were going to put a temporary overlay of asphalt on the roads to allow for snow removal during the winter months. The letter stated that the contractor would be back in April of 2019 to finish a portion of Wells Drive and Fable Lane by the end of June. The letter also stated that the town would come back in the summer of 2020 to completely reconstruct the roads. The reconstruction of the roads never happened. It has been seven years since the temporary overlay was put down and the roads are quickly deteriorating. There are areas of standing water during rain and snow events. These areas freeze in colder temperatures and create a black ice hazard, as well as break apart the asphalt. In addition to the standing water and potholes, there are sinkholes, eroded property at the roadway edges, massive gaps between the road and driveways, and destroyed catch basins because of the snow plows. This past March, I started to photograph many of these issues with the potholes, sinkholes, standing water, and cracked driveway aprons. I submitted some of those photos to Joe Capitofaro in April, who subsequently passed them on to Kathleen Blonsky. I received a letter from Ms. Blonsky stating that the overlay was not considered temporary, that it was considered permanent, and that there were roads that were in worse condition than ours. Neither of these responses are acceptable to us. This road was contracted and money was appropriated for it in 2020. It is not a new road construction project. In addition, if a one-half-inch asphalt overlay is considered acceptable, then why do roads that are being done as part of the present referendum project not just getting a one-half-inch overlay? I have a degree in civil engineering, so I know what a properly constructed road entails. This summer, I watched and photographed the road reconstruction projects on Portage Crossing, Trotters Glen, Apple Tree Lane, Reservation Road, and Wakefield Lane. In those neighborhoods, a total reconstruction of the road took place. The old curbs and asphalt were totally removed, the mechanicals were done, the road was then graded, compacted with gravel underlay, and a standard level of asphalt was laid down. Curbs were reinstalled and driveway aprons were added at each driveway. This is not what happened with our roads in 2018. On the Monday before Thanksgiving, a one-half-inch of asphalt was laid down in about seven hours. They did not remove all of the existing asphalt, nor did they grind that asphalt to aid in adherence to the new top layer. They did not compact loose soil or grade the road. They did not add a gravel underlay. They did not put in any driveway aprons. We were not given the same consideration as other roads that were done. In addition, no one from the town has adequately explained why our neighborhood was abandoned and when we can expect our roads to be reconstructed as promised. This summer, I started speaking with neighbors about the road. Overwhelmingly, they reported issues as well, so I started a petition to complete the road work in Wells Acres. So far, I have collected signed petitions from 56 homeowners. I will be submitting them to you when I finish my remarks. In summation, we, the residents of Wells Acres, demand that our roads be completely reconstructed within two years. That reconstruction would include a removal of all the asphalt from all the roads in Wells Acres, installation of additional storm drains and catch basins near the circle on Harvest Lane, proper grading of all the roadways, a compacted gravel underlay, a sufficient amount of asphalt to sustain heavy vehicles such as oil trucks, delivery trucks, and construction trucks, curbs installed so that the roadway and lawns are not eroded, driveway aprons installed at each driveway. Later this week, I will be sending an email to each member of this Town Council documenting our expectations. I expect to hear back from you in two weeks, or we will continue to escalate this issue as I feel we deserve transparency and equal consideration as the rest of the town. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else inside the council who'd like to make public comment? Anybody online, Kat?
I don't see any hands raised.
Give it one more second. Going once, going twice online? All right, we will move on to G.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the July 8, 2025 minutes to include the following in item N1 after the sentence. He said he understands the timeline and is not opposed to this ordinance, but right now more information is needed. What would be added? Mr. Blakowski stated that the registrar's proposal makes perfect sense. From the Town Council point of view, it makes complete sense to try to be as effective as possible with people you need on Election Day. He also stated that moving the 2-5 to the 1-3 precinct is a clear-cut, smart move. Lastly, Mr. Blakowski stated that moving forward is an important thing, but understands that the Republicans need more time to poll their people to see where they stand. Mr. Connolly asked about any impact of putting off the vote at that meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to amend the meeting minutes.
G2, yeah, G2, I make a motion to accept the minutes of the September 9th, 2025 regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is second, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
G3, I make a motion to accept the minutes for the September 23, 2025 regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Reading of Communications and Written Appeals. We don't have any. We will go over to Reports of Committees. 1928 Building Committee. The committee is still working hard. We are very excited. I think the timeline is moving just right where we think we are, around January. Unfortunately, we probably won't be moving in in January because who wants to move in during winter? It'll probably be hard to move furniture up and down during that timeframe. But walls are being painted, the final touches are being in. It looks like all the windows are installed now, Kat? So all the windows are in, so they are working top to bottom, and it's looking phenomenal. Do you know when the bricks will start being laid in there for the Fliss Memorial Scholarship?
They have like a five-to-eight week lead time, so they will be ordered in the next week or so, and so we're hoping to get them in. If not this fall, before the weather gets bad, then it would be in the spring.
In the spring. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Ad Hoc Fire Station Committee.
Go ahead.
No.
Go ahead. Okay. Our last meeting was September 26th, 2025. We're currently scheduling another meeting to incorporate some new ideas with the design team based on conversations with other parties that are involved.
Yeah, so I'm just, we've, a bunch of meetings have kind of arrived at this point in time, and I think we're just in the final kind of phases of tweaking the, tweaking what the recommendation will be to, to basically constitute a full building committee budget as well as scope.
Excellent. Thank you. Sidewalk Committee.
Sidewalk Committee, met September 24th. We continue to have discussions about potential changes to ordinances around things like replacement repairs and snow removal. The committee discussed the conditions under which new sidewalks would be installed, be they new town projects like Meadow Road or repairs to existing sidewalks similar to projects that have both been done in Unionville and Farmington Center in the past. We do have an informational presentation planned that has been completed, which will start off by letting residents know about our current rules and regulations and solicit some feedback on potential changes that we have. As I mentioned in our last meeting, given the timeline of the ad hoc and the future project on Meadow Road, we have spent a lot of time hearing public comment about the Meadow Road project. The committee agreed that going forward, residents would be notified about the planning of potential new sidewalks before we get this far down in the process to help alleviate some of the concerns ahead of time. The next meeting will be announced soon. Brian and I need to coordinate that. Brian, anything?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. High School Building Committee.
Sure, so we continue to meet, to go over any change orders that need to be processed for work that's already been done and to process invoices, and our next meeting is tomorrow at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. We'll move on to J, Reporter Chairs and Liaison. The Chair Report. As you know, councilors, we have received some correspondence, and I would like to have consensus that we asked the Town Manager to forward it to our Town Attorney. Brian, are we good with that?
We are good with that.
Patty?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Keith?
Yep.
Amy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
All right, Kate, Kathy, if you can make that happen, thank you. Hope Partners will be having a craft fair on 11/25 at 321 New Britton Avenue at the Senior Community Center, starting at 10:00 AM. Halloween is coming up, so when you're done with your pumpkins, Sub Edge Farm will be accepting pumpkins, so instead of throwing them away, they can be fed to their animals or composted, but please remove glitter, candles, et cetera before dropping them off. An early voting starts on the 20th of this month through November 2nd. It'll be right here at the pavilion behind the Town Hall. You can go to the Town website or to the Register of Voters website for hours. And we'll move on to Board of Education Liaison.
Thank you. Board of Ed met September 15th, I think I have the date right. An update on all summer, on the summer work that happened at the various schools, including brand-new signs at all of the schools, which make it, another one at West District looks very pretty. The summer, the updates on summer learning, there are, and many, the partners in the community who work with students, such with high school internships and things like that, Walker Group, CCSU, Claggett Dykes, I'm blanking on the last name. And then the big thing is at the last meeting, they approved the FEA contract, which I know we are discussing later in our meeting.
All right. Anyway, I guess we'll stay with you for Conservation Inland Wetlands.
Conservation Inland Wetlands has had two meetings since we last met, mostly routine requests. Homeowner is looking to expand their garages, ingrown pools, patios, a few commercial requests of most. There were two cease and desist orders issued regarding clearing in upland review area or wetlands, and they're current, those are, the subjects of those complaints are currently both working with town staff, so there's a stay on the order. And then there was a report at the last meeting, I think, that the Winchell Smith Dam has been fully removed from the Farmington River. That's the dam that was along, behind Garden Street where the, where Ms. Porter's administration building is, and this was done in collaboration also with the Farmington River Watershed Association and Ms. Porter's, as well as a few other groups and the students at Ms. Porter's. It's being used as an educational thing for Ms. Porter's as well. The next meeting is tomorrow via Zoom, and on the agenda, they'll be voting in their new, their officers.
Excellent. EDC.
Yes, our last meeting was September 10th. Our next meeting is tomorrow night at 5:30. The Fall EDC Business Breakfast Meeting will be November 12th at 7:45, and will feature UConn Health President Dr. Andrew Aguabi. That's all I have.
Thank you. TPZ, please.
TPZ. The last TPZ meeting was last Monday, not this past Monday, but October 6th. It was pretty much a short agenda. There's a number of public hearings that are coming up in the next meeting coming up. The signs were something that, you know, the commission did a great job. There was artifacts came in and did a presentation for all the signs on the school. The commission asked a lot of good questions and I think honed in, you know, that proposal to the point where I think you, we can attest that it was a success, and, and that's what I have right now for Tom Fleming.
Thank you. Brian, for Bicycle and Trail Advisory Committee.
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to share a couple of initiatives that we've been working on coming up. So if you've been walking the trails, you will notice that we're doing some work on the bollards and doing some maintenance. We'll be replacing a couple. We're going to be taking some out so there will be fewer bollards, and at some point we'll be replacing some of the bollards with the fold-away ones, so it's easier to get vehicles in there to do work and still maintain control over who can get onto the trails. Also, we're looking at upgrading some of the wayfinding signage. Some is in a little less-than-perfect condition, and we'll be looking at ways that we can improve mapping on the trail. We're also discussing how to improve access to businesses along the walking trails. We've also established a subcommittee that will be working with town staff, police in Farmington, and community members as we create guidelines for e-bike safety, as well as e-bike education for parents and children. Two other things we're doing is we'll also be working with the town staff to complete the RFP for a design of a Rails-to-Trails extension to safely get people from the Farmington Village to a UConn Medical Center in West Hartford. So we do have the money for that. We're just putting together the RFP, and we're doing a nice job making sure we get it right the first time. The last thing we're working on is we'll be working on with our Board of Educational Liaison to find the best way to bring an expanded bike safety curriculum to the schools, and that isn't work, so we look forward to working with the Board of Ed to make sure that our kids are good, safe, and active bikers in Farmington. And our next meeting will be on November 12th, so thanks very much. Just wanted to share that with everybody.
Thank you. We'll move over to K, Reporter of the Town Manager.
You have the written report in front of you, just a couple of things. Veterans Day, as you know, a brief ceremony, public ceremony will be held at the Farmington Town Hall in front of the Veterans Memorial Monument at 11:00 AM on Tuesday, November 11th, at, at 11:00 AM, so I just wanted to let you know about that. Also, effective October 1st, we did start dispatching for Avon. I think you probably saw it. We made some headlines on the news. It was very, very successful. A lot of hard work between our Director of Public Safety, Paul Malanson, Mike Grubulis, our Public Safety Dispatcher, and all our dispatchers for the transition. So it was a pretty big undertaking with all the new employees coming in and transitioning all the calls from Avon, so it went really well, so we're pleased about that. Just a reminder that you're going to have your next meeting. Joe Swetki and the Pension Board will be providing a presentation to the Town Council for the second October meeting. And just lastly, I will, based on our public comment tonight, what I'll do is I will send some correspondence just to give some context about the comments tonight about the road, and you guys can take a look at that, and maybe if we want to have a little bit of discussion, maybe at the next meeting, Russ Arnold will be there, and, but you, when you see some of the correspondence that's gone back and forth, so I'll just have, so you can have some context of that.
Thank you.
I have a motion to accept the Town Manager's report.
I have one question for Kathy, if I could. So, not really regarding the road project, but the current project, the Tinty Barn, there seemed like there was activity there, and now it's kind of gone away, but the work is incomplete.
They're still moving along.
Okay.
And Barn people kind of go at their own rate, and so we are, we are monitoring it, and he is on schedule, and we anticipate that it will be buttoned up before the winter.
Okay.
Yeah, so we are doing that.
Yeah, they hit it hard, and then they were gone.
Yeah.
And they haven't been back, and they, you know, I just want to make sure we get them back.
We have Mason in our Public Works Department, who is our capital project person, continually going with him, but Barn, there's not too many Barn people out there, so it is, it is somewhat, sometimes a challenge, but I will follow up with that tomorrow just to see where we're at. But my understanding is that the work is going to be done.
Okay. Okay. Need for Barn people out there. Need for Barn people out there. Okay, motion to accept the Town Manager's report.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. L. Appointments.
Appointments. L2, I make a motion that Richard Berlandey be reappointed to the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission for a four-year term beginning immediately, ending September 30th, 2029.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L2, I make a motion that Danielle Popovic be appointed to the Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission for a four-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2029.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Hold, please. I got it, I just lost it for a second. I know it's Mary Messier, I just want to make sure of the dates, okay? I have this computer, it's supposed to make it easier. L6, I make a motion that Mary Messier be reappointed, sorry, be appointed to the Green Efforts Committee beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm back. We're good. Oh, we have one more?
Yeah. Got L13.
Wow, look at me. This is, oh, man.
You want that one again to your right?
No, I'm a professional, I got this. This is two years, I can do it, yeah. L13, I make a motion that Kelly Shadler be appointed to the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission for a five-year term immediately, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2030.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right.
Is that all we have for appointments? Dave, you have?
I sir hope not.
We have no appointments. Okay.
Sorry.
M, Old Business? I do not see any, so we'll move over to N1, please.
N1, I make a motion to approve, reject, take no action. I read it all now. N1, I make a motion to approve the proposed contract between the Farmington Education and the Board of Education, between Farmington Education Association and the Board of Education. Ms. Creator, please, please save me.
Can we get a second, please?
Second.
Motion is second. Superintendent, how are you?
Very, very well.
Are you entertained so far?
What's up?
Are you entertained so far?
Yes, so far, very much, yes.
Good, good, good.
So, we'll just say a few words about the contract. It was a very collaborative negotiations. Patty represented the Town Council and was very active in the negotiations, so thank you to Patty. I'm going to turn this over to Dan Zatune. He's our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. He's going to say a few words, and then we'll answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, so once again, I want to thank Patty for her representing Town Council on the negotiations. Andrea Sobinski, James Reclippe, and Aidan Canto on the Board of Ed, you know, the FEA representation, and there's the CEA rep who worked very well and thought it was very, very respectful throughout. Jessica Ritter, who represented Shipman, and then just the rest of the negotiating team. You know, one of the things, having done a few contracts for like myself on both sides of things, it really was very respectful throughout the whole time. I think everyone had those common understandings and common goals to make sure that there was a fair contract, but that also was fiscally responsible for the town, and, and working to that balance, and I think everybody worked really diligently toward that, and even to the point of not even needing to get to mediation, which I think is a great accomplishment. And, you know, as I said before, we feel this is a very fiscally responsible contract that for the next three years, while at the same time being able to still attract quality teachers to maintain Farmington status as one of the top schools, districts in the state, and really the country. So we think that's a nice balance that, that was created through this contract, so happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for our superintendents?
Wow, it was well laid out, so thank you.
Well, it's very easy then, so can we get a motion to approve?
Yeah, you made the motion.
So, are we all in favor?
Very clearly articulated. So?
Okay.
I did, I did.
All in favor then?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
So much.
And for the students in the back, yes, Mr. Vibber did graduate Farmington High School.
2001, yeah. It's before Kathy's time, so don't blame her.
Have a safe night. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
N2, please.
N2, I make a motion to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Farmington and International Association of Firefighters Local 3103 for the period July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion is second, Kathy.
As you know, we have nine paid firefighters, our career firefighters, that supplement our volunteers. We're pleased to announce that we were able to come to a two-year contract with them. As I've maybe mentioned before, that we were kind of in a standstill, but we went back to the table, and we're very pleased that we were able to come with a two-year contract, and some of the highlights of it is that we're changing the fire watch rate, which is paid for by outside people, to $45 an hour. We're creating a supervisory firefighter position, and the wage scale, it's not a new position, it's just a promotional, it's a promotional opportunity. It's a working firefighter with added supervisory responsibilities. The key component of our broader restructuring of the Department of Public Safety, and as part of this, we are consolidating similar administrative functions, budgeting and purchasing between the Police and Fire Departments to improve efficiencies. So this position will oversee the day-to-day administrative operations of the career firefighters, allowing the director to focus on high-level responsibility. So we're pleased that we're able to, again, we're combining both of these departments for efficiencies and different things, and also, we think that this will help with recruitment and retention because it has a promotional opportunity. We are doing a creation of a fire inspection on-call rate for one hour of straight time to cover when the fire marshal, when he's on scheduled leave, and we're keeping the health insurance the same, and it's a 3%, 3% for the two years. So really, very basic, not a lot of changes, which we both feel, both the union and the town feel important, that we do have a new director, and he's getting his bearings, and we're seeing what changes need to be made. So neither one of us were that interested in making really substantial changes to the contract until we could see how things were going. So I think this is a really good win-win for both of us because we were somewhat at a standstill, and now with the new director, we were able to come to terms and get this settled up. So I think I would highly recommend.
Questions?
Joe?
Yes?
Kathy, how many, how many firefighters are in this union?
Nine. Thank you.
So my question, Kathy, is the supervisory role that's going to obviously develop here, is that, so then there's going to be eight, and then there's going to be one supervisor? Is that?
It's going to be, yeah, still going to be nine. One of them is what we call like a working firefighter supervisor. So we've done it in the dispatch, too, where you have like a working dispatcher, a lead dispatcher. This is a working, so they're still going to do day-to-day operations, but they are going to be the lead, kind of, with the other firefighters.
Now, just one other thing, or then in that supervisory capacity, I kind of understand their day-to-day, but is, are the other eight a direct report to that person?
It's, it's more like, no, the ultimate responsibility is the fire, is the director.
Right.
So it's, again, they have supervisory, he's kind of like the go-between and things like that, so go to Paul. So they do have a supervisory role, but how, how we write it in the, in the job description, it's a broad supervisory role. We're really, ultimately, it's still going to be the director, but they will have responsibilities, bringing back different things to the director, trying to handle some of the day-to-day things that go on that could be supervisory, and if he can't or doesn't agree, it would be moving up to the director.
Right, because that supervisory position will still be a union position?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
N three, I make a motion to award bid number 372, new or used passenger bus to Model One Commercial Vehicles, Inc. of Houston, New Hampshire at a purchase price of $97,634.
I think it's Hudson, New Hampshire.
Hudson, New Hampshire. What did I say?
Houston.
Houston, geez, Hudson. Thank you. Got to get more sleep.
Second.
Motion is second. Kathy?
This motion is to award a contract for the purchase of one new 14-passenger bus to be used by the town's Dial-A-Ride program. Bids were opened and the town received several bids for new and used vehicles. After reviewing all bids, it was determined that the most favorable bid was submitted by Model One Commercial Vehicles of Hudson, New Hampshire. Funds for this purchase are available from the State of Connecticut grant in the amount of $85,000 and the State Dial-A-Ride grant in the amount of $15,000. So we are getting a new Dial-A-Ride vehicle.
Excellent. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
N four, make a motion to award bid number 373, UConn Pump Station Upgrades, C J Fuci, Inc. of New Haven, Connecticut for a total contract price of $266,900.
Second.
Motion is second.
And I left the upgraded motion on everyone's place, which Keith did. This bid is to contract with a qualified vendor to perform upgrades to the UConn pump station. Specifically, the improvements would involve upgrading the electrical system and the instrumental and control systems. The town recently issued a request for bids for this project and received two bids. C J Fuci, Inc. of New Haven submitted the lowest responsible bid. The town had reviewed the bids and recommend that they be awarded the contract and funds are available in our capital projects account, pump station improvements, which is through the Water Pollution Control Authority. So this is an upgrade of our big pump station at the UConn, over at UConn.
Questions for Kathy?
I would have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Okay. You know, like you look at bids and if there's a big split, right? You got to think about that to some degree, right? So here we have 266.9 and 365.151. I know we have only two bids, but when you look at, when you look at how those bids are constructed, the, the big, the big difference, one of the big differences happens to be in the pump guide rail system cost. And I'm just wondering, I know you qualified the bid, so we know there's not a substitution, there's not some other thing that the low bidder is taking it, not, I'm not going to say taking advantage in a, in a negative way, but we're, we're sure that these numbers compute.
I'll, I'll ask Joe to speak to that.
We're sure the numbers compute because they're all up some. We did go through the, if each vendor, they have a walk through each vendor and actually have to put in a block or two kind of surprise. And it's just a matter of where they take their, you know, what they priced out and C J Fuci, this type of work, so they know what's going on. There's the bike, bypass, pump bypass, the prices there that broke the same stuff. So yeah, I'm not sure why, it's a wide variety of pricing for the pre-count at C J Fuci. Those are the things that are not sustainable. Actually, we're supplying probably 50% of the areas that are going into that. We're actually.
You've bought and you're going to supply the project.
Yeah, we're supplying a lot of the equipment that's being supplied.
Okay. Okay, just asked the question. Thanks for, thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
N five, I make a motion to award a contract for the relocation of three dispatch consoles from the Town of Avon to the Farmington Police Facility and the installation of an additional dispatch console, control stations and antennas to Motorola Solutions, Inc. of Woodcliff, New Jersey at a cost of $134,000.
Second.
Motion is second.
So this is all part of our consolidation and regionalization. What I think is the important point here is that this is all being paid for by the State of Connecticut. It's reimbursing the town for the full cost of this. And this was under a state bid. So again, this is again showing some of the benefits of being a regional dispatch and they're able to upgrade and it's being paid for fully by the State of Connecticut grant. So we're pleased about that.
Excellent. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
N six, I make a motion that Tyler Technologies of Moraine, Ohio, be awarded the contract to assist the town in updating the values of all real property located within the corporate limits of the town pursuant to the Connecticut General Statutes at a total contractual cost of $275,200.
Second.
Motion is second. Kathy?
It's that time again. So in accordance with the revaluation schedule issued by the State of Connecticut, the town must revale all real property for the October 1st, 2026 grand list. Town staff recently accepted proposals from qualified firms to assist the town assessor with the revale. The town received proposals from two qualified firms. Each firm submitted various options for the undertaking. The proposed costs for the options submitted by the firms range from 230 to 364. After reviewing the two proposals and the various options, staff are recommending that the contract be awarded to Tyler Technologies. The town has used Tyler for the last four revale cycles. Most of the lead staff from the 2022 revale project will be used on this contract. That's really an important point, that the same people, so when they go out there. So that, that's, that's important. And they're, they're familiar with the town. They're familiar when they did it the last time. In addition, the town staff has been pleased with the work of Tyler on the past revals. So funds for the first half of this project are included in the 2025, 26 capital budget. Funding for the second half will be included in next year's capital budget.
Questions for Kathy?
I have one quick one, just on the revales in general, which I, I think there's no answer or not a good answer, but I'll just ask it on council because I've been asked by a bunch of residents, but, so we're on this four-year, every four-year, there's only a few towns in the state that are on this four-year cycle, right?
Yeah.
And we don't know if we're ever going to go back to the five-year cycle or that's been.
I think we're going back to the five-year, right? They, they, we're on the four-year to get us on the five-year, I think, with the other towns, I think. Yes.
Kind of, but the state is trying to smooth out the number of towns that we expect rebalancing each year. What their goal is to bring down this group action. We have, there's a lot of the number of rebal comp, there's a bunch of three of some. We have like 20 pounds, we didn't get them a year. We had like four, five rebound companies. We're trying to get everybody on a different schedule so that we have the rebound company. Also, three sets of some towns, the states, the state reviews that we need to, that's a lot of improvement. So if they want to smooth it out, we have a certain number of towns. In this case, it didn't work in terms of the rebound companies, because we only had two bids and there's like 75 companies out there. So there's a lot of work being done. We will go back, this, this will be in a four-year cycle. Your next one will be in a four-year cycle and your third or your three, three from now will be, we'll go back to five.
26, 30, 35. Okay. Because that's just, I mean, just in talking to people, that's been one of the biggest things that people have said, that they're, the lack of understanding of why we, we got thrown into this, but other towns, they know that don't have it. So the answer is because they wanted to mix up, there's too many towns cycling on for rebals at the same time. They wanted to spread the wealth, basically.
They wanted to spread it out and we're, we're, there's five of us that are in a four-year cycle and all five of us that did a last rebound.
Yeah.
So it's basically those five that did the 22, around a four-year cycle. Eventually, it's back to five.
Could have done a six-year cycle, right? I'm, I'm complaining. They could have done a six-year cycle. Yeah. But who knows? It could have been worse, right? But with values, but.
Rebounds are changing so much.
Yeah.
How they're being performed, especially like in this case, a lot of the inspections, for example, we're not getting, not earning longer. Assessor actually has 10 years to complete your inspection of your residential property. So we're not actually doing inspections anymore. And most of this stuff will actually, they'll actually look at maps and look at houses online. So they're not, they're beaten on us. So the whole process has changed substantially in rebounds. But I remember, my first town, I was supposed to be, go out, spend two years inspecting every single property in town. If the last, the two, two good cycles are double, you measure a list of, of large problems, but this time we're actually looking at, not maybe, but companies to look at computer model.
Yeah. And then for the towns that got put on that four-year cycle, because it's a, it's expensive, right? So it's additional money. Did the state, the state pout about with any of that? No, just. Okay.
This is cheap for the last one though, because it's about.
Well, they're doing all the computer, the better, right?
This will actually probably be about close to $100,000.
Okay, great. Thank you, Joe.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Amy has a question.
Do you know what the other, which of the other towns are? And you said five. I know Glass and Berry.